Open session at six thirty PM.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second on the board of executive session. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
You're next.
Okay, and I, I want to approve the waiver fees and permit fees and other reimbursement discussed in executive session not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second. Any citizens comments? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
You're next.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll, District three, and this is the term. All right, moving on to old business, item A.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I, I'd also like to make a motion to move directly to presentation and discussion item two A, and following that presentation, I'd also like to move up the CNA item for that, which is item K, right after the presentation.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, item two A, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? Any citizens comments? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And we will move on to item two A, the Texas Lottery, you have Mr. Roy Iger.
Good morning, I'm Mayor, and we're discussing some council members. My name is Roy Iger, I live in Fort Worth, Texas, Fort Worth, Seventh and Fourth Street. And we talked before about the lottery. And now I'm going to make a presentation, we have talked to the county, and the county have agreed that, the county has agreed that if we made the presentation and the council voted on it, then they will follow with before that, we have, we have entered a video conference with senators for the need, and she advised us of what we needed to do in order to eventually go to the legislature, so I'm here to start the process and give you a brief story about my life and what I have done to tell you that when I start something, I see it through. If it doesn't happen, it won't be because I did not try. So with that, let me start with the first item. Fort Worthville has been a city that had a lot of torture, and here is back in nineteen sixteen, nineteen sixteen, even we used to have a bank that bring their own money, so this is what we started with the history of Fort Worthville. And then from there, I'll give you an idea just about what I have done in the past. I started back in nineteen seventy-three, I published different books, and I didn't know any better, so I used a mimeograph machine that I bought from Sierra for fifty dollars. This is turned into this book, later we moved into a lottery newsletter, we carried that all the way down to nineteen ninety-five. In nineteen ninety-five, then the publishing turned a different color, different view, and more money, we could hire different people to do a better job, so that takes us to that point. Then, on that same, on that edition, I was given the title of the greatest boss in the world, I don't think I deserved it, but I guess I treated employees fair, and they thought I was. Here's another one, I'm going to make this short possible, and this is another presentation. And from there, then we move into television show. We saw the publishing business from the gross amount, the buyer didn't want to drop the amount of money that I received for, and then I went on television and did the same thing. This is a show that went on by over six hundred countries, and I think they did it probably as soon as it began. So, we don't fancy it, but that's fine. So I've been around quite a bit in show business. So these girls that worked part of the show twenty-one years ago, when I was making my way, my wife said, "You better quit that show business, I don't like those girls." So that ended that, that was my last interview, and one of the questions was about, "What is the next six number that the lottery is going to draw?" It's laughing about it. So from there, when two of the country made a different interview, this was for the Channel Nine, in a foreign country, question about the situation in the United States and around the world, so here we have another presentation. So, to make it short, for difficult time, we need to have radical women. With this in mind, I searched the office of the comptroller for the state of Texas, and trying to find ways that we can raise money without having to tax the citizen. With that, we can end to this. The lottery seemed to be the one that it would be suited. So, in July eleven of nineteen ninety-one, one of the senators presented to create a lottery in the state of Texas. Six months later, on November of nineteen ninety-one, it became law. On March twenty-four, nineteen ninety-two, the G-Tech Corporation, one of the biggest lotteries in the world, and gave me from the slot machine, was granted to do the business and sell the equipment. They did that for free, they ensured that you won a percentage of the cup, so everybody got a couple of that, but the cities are coming. On May twenty-nine, it became law, the first ticket was sold, so six o'clock in the morning, this end pressure, the former governor bought the first ticket, twenty-four hours later, over twenty-three million dollars were sold. With that in mind, a lot of people think that we've not only supplied money for education, however, this is the budget for the twenty nineteen and twenty eighteen budget, and the way that it works is the senate will run on with forty-two billion dollars, back when the lottery started, it was nine billions, now it's forty-two. And the House of Representatives, Representative, what is like a forty-two billion. This little square here, in red on both of them, that is the lottery contribution to the Texas education. This is dropped in the budget, however, they don't have enough money to carry the law. So, the foundation for the food program requested that to do business, it had to be forty-two point seven billion. So, what they decided was that the senate will not prove anymore, so the senate took the difference, which it was just about one point billion dollars, and pass it to the food district, which changed it into property tax, in order to complete the budget. So just to show you can get a general idea. So the question is, what do counties and the city get from the lottery in Texas? The truth is that it gets nothing. Fort Worthville has three retailers that are on the top one hundred retailers in the state of Texas. The Knick got in revenue on the five percent that they collect, about fifteen hundred dollars a week. That's five point four of the commission for every dollar that they sell. Normally, they pay out, and you go to these places, and you see the screen, this way we pay off six, seven million dollars, six, seven thousand dollars in prices. To achieve that, they have to sell about twenty-four thousand dollars in tickets a week. So it's time to share the wealth and make change, state one. This is what I'm proposing. In the twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen, the lottery increased in revenue about twenty-three percent on one point one billion dollars. So it brought the note to the total sales on twenty nineteen to six billion, two hundred and fifty-one millions. From there, when the lottery started in nineteen ninety-one, fifty percent went to the price money, and thirty-five percent, thirty percent went to the tax, most of the number in red, that went to the voluntary tax, and then the lottery, the compensation was five percent for the retailer, and five percent for the G-Tech Corporation. Nowadays, now the price money has grown up, because it's so much money, to sixty-four percent, but when they start giving the money to the school, then we do the seven percent to twenty-five point eight. And then, the retailer got five point four, and the lottery operator, that he just laid from the revenue, they lowered down the revenue to three point six, they said, "We're making so much money that we won't want to charge." So the G-Tech Corporation now is three point six, what before they did five percent. That leaves ten percent from the civilians and the veterans, so what we're proposing is that we take this amount here, from the sixty-four percent, which is four billion dollars, we asking to get four point eight percent, and divide it into the two hundred and fifty-five for county that is on the state. So we're not touching nothing for the school, we're not touching nothing for revenue from the retailer, we don't touch anything from the operators of the lottery or the veteran. We're just asking that from this percentage here, the sixty-four percent, that used to be fifty before, to share some of that wealth with the counties and the city, because when the lottery ticket is sold, nobody collect any tax, but if you buy it, soda water, or cake or something, you can tax it percent. So they sign for twenty-three thousand dollars or more from this retailer store that disappeared from the county, luckily, that we don't get canceled back in return. So what I asking is to, a proposal to get four point eight, and then that could mean this, right about hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, that be distributed into every county on the state, so they can use it with the city, to alleviate the tax burden that they receive from this town. So, that is about seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, that is will be for a four percent to each county, including Wilson County, we would have that county money. Then, the city probably will get about three hundred thousand dollars of that, and the other five hundred thousand would go into the county for your road, or whatever the other four cities in the county would need. So I need you to vote and approve on this, so I can go to, on the road again, like at the TV shows, and go to the county, and make the same proposal and approve, and then go to the other city, get that voted on for the same presentation, so we can carry on into, thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'll be back to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Iger.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Are you the first one to start this call, or hesitate to start already?
No.
Nobody.
I talked to Mr. Cantu, and one time, I talked to the mayor, there was a possibility about it, and then kind of drop off of it, and they, when the situation became, that taxes and we, and the situation now that the cities and counties are getting in debt with what's been happening with the pandemic and so on, and they said, "Let me look at this again."
Mr. Roy, what, what I'm trying to say is, are other counties and cities doing it too, or are you the first one to have the numbers?
The first one.
The first one?
Well, I was the first one, like proposing, and I was presenting to the council, we talked to the council, protesting with Mr. Cantu, then we have a meeting with the senator, and she gives us some advice on how to get it done, and they said, "I'm right behind you, but you get, get the numbers behind you too, before I can present it and carry it to see if we can get it into a vote."
So is it going to go to the rent, or the senate, or budget, county, or what?
Well, it will have to go into the, the senate to propose to change the law, where now the county to receive this money from the lottery fund.
And we're asking Senator, do the stuff we need to take it in and try to go in.
Right, I, 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 I understood that, but what, what I'm saying is, it, it, it's going...
Eventually, you're going to be involved in the house and the senate, yeah.
Compliment, I was on the call with Senator DePerey as well, so right now, we're on the preliminary grassroots stages, so it starts with us, we're going to the county, and then we're going to talk to any other municipalities, to present this to them, so they can jump on board and take it to the senate.
Yes, and we'd like to reiterate that that is a long process, it doesn't happen right away.
Right, we understand that. We've been helping, we've been helping every county in this state, even if it's hard.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
And if I may, Mayor and Council, there is a resolution regarding this item, it is under section A, and I think that Mayor Proten Cantu, that's under your name, then your sponsoring, yes?
Please, you have three, you, Mr. Iger.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Iger.
You're welcome.
And at this, at this moment, I then have, I think, believe I have a motion to go into that item next, which would be three K, do I have a motion to move that item up?
I leave the motion.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it, or do you want to... Do to move that item up?
Yes.
Consider next, okay, so motion, may I, Councilwoman Cantu? Okay.
Yes, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, thank you, that's real line, item three K, and I will put... I would say I'd actually approve Resolution twenty twenty dot zero one five, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fort Worth, authorizing the mayor or person so designated by the City Council to undertake any efforts necessary to facilitate the implementation of legislature, which will further authorize the vision of lottery revenue. Mayor Proteer, can't you?
I'm going to approve.
Okay, I have a motion, now, do we need to stipulate who you want to, to authorize? And that could be a question for attorney.
If, I did need to amend, Mayor, that if, that is to be considered tonight, if the council so wishes you, it does say on the second page that the City Council of the City of Fort Worthville here, here, and authorizes the mayor and or, and you can designate an individual as their designated agent, and if you change your mind, or you want to amend that, we could further amend that at a future time.
Okay. So we still have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Cantu, do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded. Any citizens comments pertaining to this?
Mayor, I have a comment.
Okay.
Um, I just, really, it's more of thanking Mr. Iger for going through all of the effort to research this information, and actually thinking of the veteran of the city, not just our city, but all the cities across the state, you really put in a lot of work for this, did a lot of the background work, and brought it to us, and brought it to the senator, and so, you know, he's really the one that we have to thank for this.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, five zero. Okay, as the council, we're going back up to old business, while we're moving back to number one, consideration action to approve that meeting minutes, but regular council meeting on March the twelfth, twenty twenty.
Mayor, can I ask a real quick question before you move on to, to old business? Did the council, I know they approved the resolution, but did they want to go again and authorize and designate an alternate person at this time, or did they want to do that in a future time?
Well, I have a question about that, Ms. Rodriguez, should it be just a person, or should it be a committee?
Well, right now, we have it as a person, that's what I am designated in the resolution, and I think it's because we are at the grassroots, we're at the very beginning stages, I think it might change, but I think this is a learning process with Mr. Iger, it's something that I think is growing as we get going. We're hoping to, to have a lot of other cities and counties that will join us, because as, there might be some added fees and stuff of that nature, and I think that at that point, instead of just having to score Mr. Iger going, or having an individual designated, at that time, you might end up having to either hire an individual to go further out the chain, or you might have to set up committees and stuff of this nature. So what you've got in front of you is just beginning stages, it will be subject to modification in the future, as we go forward.
And Ms. Rodriguez, I only ask because right now, at the beginning stages, he is going to go to other municipalities, but we also will be contacting other municipalities, other people and our other organizations, to say, "We're going to have a representative go," and so, you know, it's kind of sharing that beginning stages, not necessarily leaving it all up to him, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So I didn't know if it needed to be Mr. Iger and whoever is assisting him, or...
I would ask, that, that is your decision?
Well, actually, I have to read this, I have a lot of time, I need to get a lot of this, so, he also did attend, definitely, he's called, he also is also pretty, already to the council, to Commissioner's Court, so that they are ready for this comeback, and for approval, and then literally, we have to take this on the road. So, if, if the mayor is available to be meeting, if you want to have the designated and the city manager, I would be representative, so that we can go ahead with fishing, trying to gauge these other committees, because after a while, I believe, the city's, Senator representative, recommendation was that we take it to TML, and start to, but we did everybody in our county on board, and so, we start this process, but definitely, we just, it kind of like legitimizes that he's representing the City of Fort Worthville, of course, the mayor is the City of Fort Worthville, the city manager, that we can talk about these things. So if you would like to add that caveat, I would be, in agreement with that recommendation. The city manager, the positioner, put my name, the position, as well as a representative of, and that would be Mr. Iger.
I'm going to make a, a recommendation to, to Mr. Iger, city manager, and the mayor Proten, along with that, but do you know that, you know, we are all going to be helping with this, we talked about TML, I'll be on TML, so I would be speaking to my board members about this as well, so it's not just going to be on Mr. Iger's shoulders, you know, we're all going to take a part in this.
He's second. I guess it's definitely a challenge.
Yes.
And like I said, we are at the beginning stages, and I think that once you get started, and you tell other people about the possibilities, and what will take place, I think that people will get excited, and then it's going to grow.
Yes.
I see that.
So we can review this, except motions case as is?
Mayor, with some correction, we will need a correction, that, that they have, the motion will indicate that they will designate you mayor, and additionally, the city manager, Roy Iger, and or the mayor Proten, is that correct?
Yes.
As a designated agent.
Yes, okay. Would that correction?
Yes, is, would that, is that correct, for the individuals that, that made those motions, with that correction?
Yes.
And would that be the same vote?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Okay, so, would you, will I have to re-vote on that, with those corrections, on the council, or you can take that...
Can you please, Mayor, I would feel so much more comfortable, Mayor, if there would be a re-vote on that, please?
Okay, okay, uh, let me see, I think the councilwoman Cantu, you will rescind your original motion, and then you can...
I rescind my original motion, and add that, that, um...
The individual.
The individual, Mayor.
The city manager, Roy Iger, and or yourself, okay, as designated agents. Yeah?
Okay, I have a corrected motion on the floor, do I have a second?
A second.
Counselwoman Martinez, second, Mayor.
Okay, seconded, any citizens comments? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
And I also was going to say, as soon as we can get going with other cities, like the Vernea and...
Uh, we, we can, now that we have that, sort of go back to Commissioner's Court, so they can approve the resolution, and then after Commissioner's Court approves it, then we'll take it on to other cities. But they're having, maybe, a little money, we don't have enough time, you know, to agenda, we'll do the next, Commissioner's Court to agenda, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Iger.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to, moving on to old business, I would like a consideration action to approve that meeting minutes of the regular council meeting on March the twelfth, twenty twenty. Counselor, you have the forty minutes, hopefully, you had a chance to look it over, and if there's any corrections, I'll entertain those changes. Okay, do I have a motion to accept these minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes for March the twelfth, minute.
I have a motion on the floor, uh, Ms. Martinez, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
I didn't vote on that, I was staying, I, because I was absent.
Okay, thank you, Counselwoman. There's voters, four, zero, four, four zero. Moving on to item V, consideration action to approve that meeting minutes for the emergency council meeting on March the sixteenth, of twenty twenty.
I move to approve.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Cantu, do I have a second?
I'm ready, Ms.
I have a motion, do I have a second, I'm sorry, the final loss, volume.
March sixteenth, twenty twenty. I'll second.
Okay, I have a second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
I will stay and use my absence.
Okay, thank you. Well, your honor, I can see consideration and action to approve that meeting minutes for the regular council meeting on March the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty.
I move to approve.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Cantu, do I have a second?
I'll say second.
Do I have a second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, moving on to item D, consideration and action to approve that meeting minutes for the emergency council meeting on April the third, twenty twenty.
I move to approve, I approve, I will approve there.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, moving on to item E, consideration action to approve meeting minutes for the regular council meeting on April the ninth, of twenty twenty.
I move to approve.
I have a motion on the floor to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to item F, consideration and action to approve the meeting minutes for regular council meeting on April the sixteenth, twenty twenty.
I have a question, Martha, but I don't know I have a question, wait.
I move that we approve the minutes for April sixteen.
Oh, that was a zooming. Okay.
Okay, do I, do I have a motion for...
I move to, I move to approve, that was the, that was when we went on, then we came back?
Yes.
That's my question.
Do I, I have a motion, Councilwoman Cantu?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
It was first motion by Councilwoman Martinez, Mayor, and second by Councilwoman Cantu.
Okay, I'm sorry, please forget that, okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, moving on to item G. Consideration and action to approve that meeting minutes for special council meeting on April the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty.
I move to approve.
I have a motion on, I have a motion on the floor to approve, do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Item H, consideration and action to approve that meeting minutes for the special council meeting on April the twenty-eighth, of twenty twenty.
I move that we approve the minutes for April twenty-eighth.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Martinez, Ms. Martinez, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
I'll abstain. I'll abstain because that's, that's what I'm following on.
Thank you, Councilman. Moving on to item 2B, Garcia, you have to report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council. I have the, um, you have to report in front of you. Uh, the, what is the main item you talked about earlier is COVID-19. And just to demonstrate that, I wrote this on May 12th, and on June 3rd, the government issued new orders in America to do that. So just for the record and for the public certification, uh, the occupancy now is 20% instead of the 25. And so it is a moving target. And so we're trying to keep up, uh, which you have, there's open, what we can do, and those kind of things. So, uh, you have that information. But again, uh, as of June 3rd, the rules have changed again in opening up Texas. However, at your last emergency meeting, uh, special meeting that we had, we talked about the funding that you could receive for the 20%. And I do want to report that the city of Floriso has received the $87,197 in our main account. And so we're ready to go ahead, yes, Mayor. Ready to go ahead and make it to the floor. We receive that right away. Uh, thank you, Council, for approving that. And so now we're going to go after the remaining 80%. Uh, I do want to, Eric, that we do need to be on the same page. And so that's really important for us to be on the same page, so that we're not giving these messages going forward. The other thing I wanted to discuss right quick is our finance department. And so, uh, you will be meeting your finance director. Uh, she will be attending your next meeting, uh, at the end of the month, the 25th? The 25th. As my charter, she's supposed to give a report. And so she will be here to give a report. Uh, we should have some kind of numbers from the auditor for the 25th meeting, as well as you can see my draft budget, my outline draft budget. And so we will have those things for you at your next meeting. Uh, that should address your finance issues, the audit as well. Uh, I don't know if you have recently talked about an audit committee, but that will be on the agenda for next week, because I have an audit committee. The sidewalk project is underway, it's going, oh my God, it's almost done. And so, not at the next meeting, but in July, I'll be ready to go and apply for the next phase. We have to start that process again to start for phase two. Uh, it is time, the application is due in October. But there's a process we have to start again. And they have sent the invitation saying, here we end, it's time. So it's time. So we'll be bringing that forward to you for the sidewalk project. And as a side note, uh, the city of Floriso has received a hundred million dollars in Texas dollars for a high compliance grant that will begin the next fiscal year. The other commercial projects, as you see, we have several of them on the agenda for tonight. Uh, we are working very hard, but the thing that's really exciting, a couple of months ago, we all approved 107, uh, lots in Brooklyn, uh, to be bought by Portwooders, the largest developer of houses in the United States. They did 107 units, and they have started on them. They have closed on the 18th of May, and they have eight under construction as of today. So we're really excited about these commercial projects, uh, and moving forward. Uh, I have another item on the agenda talking about funding, and I have some side meetings we need to do that. That's the end of my report. Again, thank you for you. And then also, we have a retail coach that's, uh, attached to that during our pandemic regarding our sales tax. And I'm having a special report put together for our hot tax that I'll have for your next meeting. Uh, if you have any questions, please let me know in your report.
Thank you, Mrs. Turner. Okay, moving on to item 3A. Consideration and action under new business. Consideration and action to approve a minor re-plant of 0.35 acres, excuse me, uh, 0.35 of an acre, a land. Uh, the R A town subdivision in Wilson County located within the city of Floriso that is located at intersection of 281 Hospital Boulevard and F Street. Mr. Turner?
Yes, this is a question that came before you, it was on P N Z. And they, uh, got the permission to rezone, pardon me, if you remember that, on F Street, over there by Innes Motors. And this is actually related to report the plant, and they divided it up. Do you have representative, uh, from the Indian firm? Do you have anything to add from, um, he, right now, he's wearing a hat for them. He's got a hat for us. Your business hat. Do you want to explain what it is, Mrs. Turner?
Uh, it's just a re-plant, or it's a minor plant, a re-plant of, uh, industrial, uh, well, I think of three zones, a commercial, uh, lot, and that's basically it.
So they have to divide it up, and you have to report the plant. Uh, you'll have to, my house will be all assigned, so you won't have to catch you. The money will do a great job, it will be nice to get you the sign originally. Or Jake's like, well, I got signed, right here. So, uh, we'll be, uh, having to do that. But that came before P N Z, uh, earlier for the rezoning, and now they're just dividing it up, so that they'll have different divisions of that.
Okay, thank you. Council, do you all have any questions? Any, any comments or questions by the Council? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve a minor re-plant of 0.35 acres of land at the R A town subdivision in Wilson County.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. Any citizens' comments?
There are none, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Council. Moving on to item 3B. Consideration action to approve that preliminary plant of Horace Villan, B, B, who? Horace Villan, being addressed.
Uh, yes, Mayor, it's the Council. This is a property that we spoke to earlier in the second session. Uh, they need to be able to report that. Uh, and so it has gone before P N Z, which is asking for the permission that they report the plant.
I move to approve the primary re-plant of Floriso, that, the, the, the.
All right, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded. Uh, any citizens' comments?
There are none, Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Council, I see. Moving on to item 3C. Consideration action to approve the preliminary plant of B K 515 and Dustin's Track.
Uh, yes, Mayor, this is also a property, uh, that's injected into that first property. The B K stands for Burkini. So Burkini is coming to the city of Floriso, and they need to subdivide their property. And it's located, as you can see, around 21, and they need to divide it up. And so they're asking to, having to approve the preliminary plan. Your engineer has reviewed it, and it said it has been committed all the things that need to do, and basically reviewing the, uh, recognition of this plant.
I move to approve the primary re-plant of B K 515, that, that, that.
I have a motion. I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second. Any citizens' comments?
There are none, Mayor.
Thank you. If none, um, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Council, 50. Item 3D, consideration action to approve the subdivision plant of McDonald's, number 42 dash 1987.
Uh, yes, Mayor, City Council, so it is what it says. It is a plot of subdivision for the McDonald's. McDonald's proposed to totally demolish and to expand their lot, uh, rebuild and that location. And so they're asking to have them approve them to record their plot as they're going to increase the size of the McDonald's. It's both have a play lot, two drive-throughs going through, it is not through P N Z, and they are hoping to be under construction by July 1st.
Ms. Turner, is the lawn behind them, is that McDonald's also?
Yes. And McDonald's owns that lot all the way to that Road 130, I have a friend there. They've gone, they went all the way back. And so they're going to use a lot more of that lot, but they need to get like that. Uh, so we're really excited, they're going to do a total demolish, and they rebuild the net with that location.
I move to approve the subdivision that McDonald's, number 43087.
I have a motion on, a motion on the floor, yeah?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, I have a second. Any citizens' comments?
There are none, Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, motion passes 50. Moving on to item D. Consideration and action to approve the supplemental water supply agreement between the city of Floriso and Oak Hills Water Supply Corporation.
Uh, Mayor, City Council, by my, this is something that has been ongoing. Uh, we've been working on this, and I remember it was not just Valentine's Day, but last Valentine's Day, your attorney and I were sitting over there, with Oak Hills Water, and we're having a meeting on Valentine's Day, negotiating this. So this is the interconnected to U S D A. Uh, this is one of the requirements. And so what this interconnected says, if they're going to allow us to build it, they'll take it over, but connect to their system. We have really negotiated all of those numbers. Uh, they have approved it, they just want us to approve it, and they're signing as well. Uh, the attorney and the engineer tuned into the meeting, uh, with us. And this is the last piece of the puzzle that we need to have to get the 2.5. I spoke to your line, Council, today, they've already processed it. And so we should be closing within the next 30 to 45 days on the 2.5 billion dollar project with the U S D A to do what we need to do, so we can get Plaza back online. So that's what we're hoping to do. Uh, I can say, if the attorney has it, she wants to say, I want to do this.
Something I'm really excited about, and I'm understanding, is that today, we actually got some of the last documents that were needed in order to get this moving forward, this whole sign. Thank you, Dino Campu, for that.
Yes, we have some easement agreements. If you look at the, more of the colorful pages, you want to have these. They're talking about easements, which is going to come from, if you think about Los Park. Right off doors, on that side, there's some homeowners that allow us to have a larger easement than we do, to come over there, on, we want to get the Plaza up, to do this interconnect. Uh, Oak Hills Water has a 12-inch line right there by C B S. Uh, C B S has Oak Hills Water, also, McCollies has C B S Water. So they had always intended for us to have some kind of connection, and this is just going to make me do that. It is a supplementary resource, if we need water, and emergency, that's important. But, uh, this is something we've been waiting to do. And so I'm asking the law to approve this agreement to allow us to make this improvements to their system, and they will allow us to connect to their system.
Butters, you have a question to the leaders, our Council?
I have a question, I don't know. Uh, the agreement is every five years, and after that, it will be one year?
I believe it is, Madam Mayor, pro temp. Um, with hopes that we will continue to use it in an emergency basis. Uh, we're hopeful that it will not be needed, but I know that if we do not have it, that the city in that situation will not fare well. So, yes, Mayor?
We've had several instances, even before now, we've had, even when we had the tornado, uh, you know, we've had three months, uh, but only two of them were functioning now. But in order to have a need, to have two of them. We had some experience early before the pandemic, where we had problems with high school. That's because we didn't have our, one of our hoses offline. And so this will be able to, that if we ever need to have some extra water, if we take one of ours offline, we can borrow and buy water from them. This is not a freebie for us. We have provided water, but we're providing the infrastructure to make the connection. So every five years, we have to negotiate again, because they increase their prices every five years. So the purpose of reopening is just to talk about the price, uh, to maybe do that. But the infrastructure, they have to be respectful of this U S D A money, that it's not necessarily theirs.
And the infrastructure, will we need them?
And we don't have to pay them to put on use it, right?
No, we do. There is, there is a connection fee.
I just get connected, I'm getting them.
Connection fee, we have to pay them, so that is there. Because every now and then, they have, they have to bring the people over to do it. It's a non-fee.
But, I mean, if we don't use for one?
There, there is a fee for us to be connected to their system.
Okay.
So if we don't use a drop, there's a fee that we have to pay.
And we have insurance?
Yes. And so we will set that in the agreement, but the money really hits them when we turn it on. We have to give them, uh, seven to our notice to turn it on. There has to be certain reasons for us to turn on, it's cancer. You know, I feel like taking some Oak Hills water, let it turn on. Uh, but there has to be some reason, a right reason for that. Their engineer has gone over this, their attorney is about in his state, and that's, um, right in the two, two years to negotiate this.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Any other comments or questions by the Council?
I have a comment. Um, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
On 4.002, uh, it says about the late fee, if you have, no, there? Thank you. It says Oak Hill may apply late charge on past dues, but it doesn't say how much.
That push, you could address to the, uh, our attorney?
Remember?
Correct. But you could be addressed to our, our lawyer?
And, well, Mayor, we can ask for further clarification on that. This is, uh, my understanding is that I know that there was going to be a monthly fee of $600.
Correct.
And there was going to be, I, I would say that it would be the statutory amount that is basically charged on everybody, but I can clarify that.
I think that's...
For you, Council. I can ask, uh, their attorney, and be sure of that enough. Because I know that we even got back and forth on the monthly fees and stuff of that nature. When I first reviewed this, I highlighted areas and sent them to Ms. Turner, and we discussed this with, with them, and see what we can work out and stuff in that nature. So that might have been something that we put out there, and then they were responsible. We can check on that.
Right, goes along.
Thank you, Mrs.
If it's not here, if it's not here, then they, they, they come back and say, you know what?
Well, they, you'd be considered like a mark client. And so they have their, like a mark client, so whatever they would charge, they're going to mark clients for, uh, their fees will get charged for it. But even how we do, we can represent that what it is.
Our customers know how much they're going to be paying late fee. But Council doesn't know how much we're going to be paying.
And we can clarify that now.
Right, right.
What, that is a change is of that, about we will be having to do to them.
I think we were really concerned about with the monthly fees and stuff of that nature.
The monthly fees and the amount of water that we sell.
That we were going to be able to use.
We went back and thought of them.
That's the first thing that, that popped out.
And, and, and once again, Councilwoman Ortiz, and Mayor and Council, this is for an emergency basis.
Right.
And just this past summer, I know that we had, uh, Ms. Turner, we had some downhill scares, uh, and there was times that I know that, I'm sure Ms. Turner was holding her breath, hoping that he would survive another day, that we would do okay, as far as water went, and stuff of that nature. So this is to make sure that, that the city of Florisville will never lack for water. That if this, if you do have an emergency, that you will not have to evacuate your city, because you do not have water. You will have the infrastructure in place, you will know how much, uh, per gallon you will be paying in an emergency situation. You will know how much gallons they want to sell you. We can verify if you are late, and if it is going to be over 30 days late, how much you will start, how be, have to verify that amount if we have that.
But just we have, it's a one-way. They can only supply water to us. They're uphill, and we're downstream. So there's no selling water back to them, they're only selling water to us. Uh, they have more water than they can use, and so it's only selling water to us. So they will have, like, a side guard to us as their system.
It works one-way. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, will you move forward?
And I'll get that for you, and we can add that. If, if, uh, the Council Mayor decides to move forward, we can move forward, but with the caveat that we will add in there the amount of the late fee that will be charged.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that understood by the Council?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. So, if there's no further discussion on this, do I have a motion by Council, by Council?
So move, Madam Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilman Ortiz, do I have a second?
I'll second it, but that's going to be with the...
Right, that's...
Will the Council have to add the name of the late fee?
Right. Any citizens' comments pertaining to this?
Madam Mayor, there are none.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Passes 50. Moving on to item F. Moving on to item F, consideration action to approve an interlocal agreement for conveyance of real and personal property between the city of Florisville and Wilson County Emergency Services District 4 and Wilson County Emergency District 5. Mr. Tom Caldwell?
Mayor, if I may, we have Mr. Caldwell here, who's representing both entities. We also have representative from both of them.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, you have some votes here. We have the presidents of the respective commissioners, uh, boards that oversee both districts. We also have Ms. Hernandez and her Assistant Chief, uh, Mr. Lee Wong, who are here as well. As the city may know, last year, these two districts were formed mostly by the hard work of the Florisville Volunteer Fire Department and the Wilson County Volunteer in our citizens, which currently, both are utilizing two buildings, two structures, that 1402 Hospital Boulevard that is owned by the city. Through the hard work of these men and women, uh, they got the number of votes. They got an issue of creating emergency services districts for this area and the surrounding areas. Two votes, and it was passed last year. The districts were created effective January 1. Old members were appointed by the Commissioner for Wilson County. And now at this time, what is going to happen on October 1st is the districts are both going to take over providing fire and emergency medical response, utilizing the Wilson County Volunteer ambulance service with this district 4 and the Florisville Volunteer Fire Department with this district 5. The district basically is going to take what used to be very, very well-run entities on a very, very small budget. And they're going to bring the tax revenue that the district collects to that. They can only use tax revenue for that form of thing, provision of the United States. What we were proposing is we want both ESBS 4 and 5 want to establish our central stations right here in Florisville. Because let's face it, the city of Florisville is our primary customer for our district. We have plenty of other folks that are in the county as well and in the city of Hope, but your residents are the primary customer. The good news is now that we're here, the city alone has to supplement the ambulance or the fire department. We're going to do that. But in the meantime, we need facilities to do so. And what we both, the city manager and city attorney, was entering into an interlocal agreement with the city of Florisville, where the city would convey title to the property on 1402 Hospital, to the districts, and in exchange, they would set their central headquarters at those two locations. Now, the districts are going to pay to have the entire block, because currently it's one big piece of property. If y'all relate, there's a city water tower around the middle. What the districts are going to do, this is no cost, all of this is no cost to the city instead. The districts are going to pay to have the entire section of property replanted into three lots. The middle lot will remain, city of Oak Hill. The other two lots will be titled to ESBS 4 and 5 respectively, so that they basically will own the property with some conditions. Number one, the city has equipment, utility equipment on the property, so they have an access easement, open access easement. And there will be what's called a right to revert, which means that if ESBS 4 or 5 ever cease to use those properties in purpose of their purposes, that property will revert back to the city of Florisville, including all improvements their own. The reason this is important, lady and man, is because, as y'all know, political subdivision can only spend tax dollars for what else? We can't improve that property if y'all know it. We can only improve it if we know it. We, we can improve that, we can make that a more modernized fire station or a modernized EMS station, but we can't do so if we don't, because then we have to compete with subdivision spending tax dollars. I believe Ms. Turner can lay in that there is a certain cost that y'all pay every year in refurbishment and maintenance of both facilities and these respective agencies, the ambulance service and the fire service. That would be something that the city of Florisville is no longer paying. We're going to be pegging with that.
Yes, because we are not a tax entity. The city's total in our next budget, I think, consulting, I think it's somewhere around $65,000 to give to the fire department, about $55,000 to give to EMS, and then there's a $10,000 we put aside for equipment. This also will be all the ownership and titles that we have on the fire apparatus, the road will be us, and then of course, there will be some of the EMS as well. So going forward, that would not be part of our budget. I think the total is about $105,000 total, of what we don't have to, but we still have those services. And so that's really something exciting. Uh, there is a tax issue, but there's not. Because the city of Florisville owns the property right now, there's no added no taxes. Because we are a tax entity, there will be added no taxes for them as well. You know what I'm saying, as well? We will have a small expense for ourselves that we need to do some fencing, but it's not really, that's a number. We need to fix the fencing anyway, but we would need to do some fencing to that property so that we can fence it, you know, with 9/11 and COVID-19, everybody's being more stringent of that. But there's not an issue. We will have a, a universal easement, so we can get to our property. There's entrances there, it makes sense. And so the attorney has actually given it. Do you have any comments?
I do. I actually, Madam Mayor and Counsel, I actually think this is a win-win for the city. We will make sure, in this process, you will make sure that you will have these services that are being provided to your citizens in your city. And if they decide to leave and no longer be here, then the property, along with all improvements that they made, will revert back to the state. So I consider that a pretty much of a good win for you. You will provide the services. While they're here and they choose to leave you, which you hope they don't, then you'll still be doing pretty good. So, yes.
So, Mr. Caldwell?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have to, um, consider a contract, or are you just going to turn it over to you?
Well, ma'am, what I prepared is called an interlocal agreement for conveyance of real and personal property. Uh, it's a document, it's twice as big as long, I've tendered it to city manager and your city attorney. It contains all the terms in the interlocal agreement that will apply to districts and the city. And it also has deeds of passage, and it also has waivers, disclaimers from the city. We'll take over the property, you are responsible for it, y'all aren't anymore. And like she said, same with vehicles. We will be ensuring these fire trucks, we will be improving, updating them, and basically modernizing this, this emergency medical and fire response for the citizens of Florisville and the S M. And one thing I do want to know, I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor, because this would be something that I would be thinking about if I was a councilperson. Um, do you have the authorities of counsel to, quote-unquote, give away something like this? Well, under the local government code, you can only give away things that the city owns to certain situations, certain entities. Yes, other political subdivisions, confirmants of public purpose that benefits political, so we're well within law.
And it's outlined in your interlocal agreement? And Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, I think you were cut off, and you had a question.
No, I was just going to say, can you have any other questions or concern about issues for the council?
Clarification, so the city would just be responsible for, basically, the property with the water tower. Is that okay?
Correct. We'll maintain how that hard the water tower is. We want to be able to encourage, you know, they're, they're like babies, they're starting out. They have to, actually, see the access of it yet. Uh, and so this, due to the consideration, it will be, it helps to give them the leg up that they need to do to get started.
Ms. Turner, how big are the lots?
I'm sorry, how big are the lots? They're 2.7 acres of way.
Yes, and so they would have, it's all one, it's all one lot.
Okay. That's including the water tower, no, yes?
Yes, ma'am, that falls within the 2.71, but this is finalized, and tonight's action is the first step. And when the council votes, we agree. Then the Florisville here, I give you a hint, they also have a yes table, too. Um, but then what will happen next, over the course of the next three months, and as we're in the final closing, would be in September. Um, what will happen next is there will be surveys and partitions, where we cut up that 2.71 into three tracks. One of those tracks will remain squarely in the city of Florisville, titled and ownership. That would be the water tower. And then the other two, one would be ESBS 4, one would be ESBS 5.
I have a question, ma'am.
Yes.
Um, Henry, what about the fire trucks? At one time, do we have the title, or would that kind of pertain to that?
It, it's going to include the apparatus and the trucks as well. Uh, the city also has, we have some, they have some both trucks that are with fire department, and some will be off title, and this will take care of that as well. Because it is a risk that they have being on titles, but they don't have the ownership of...
Everything will be, everything will be there.
Uh, we all have the use that I can bring up for, by chance. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to comment on this issue.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, well. It is a sad departure, but a happy beginning. They, they have done a tremendous job in Florisville here and around the county. Uh, just want to say that I'm very proud of them, but they haven't...
Thank you. Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Any other comments or, or discussion? If not, I would like to adjourn motion.
I want to approve a verilite agreement for conveyance of real and personal property between the city of Florisville and Wilson County Emergency Services District 4 and Wilson County Emergency Services District 5.
I have a motion. Second?
I second.
I'm second. Any citizens' comments?
There are none, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes by zero. Thank you so much to everybody involved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
Moving on to item G, consideration and action to approve a downtown sidewalk lighting and retaining improvement project as previously determined by the EDC board of directors. Can we prove suitable, or suitable for infrastructure necessary to promote or develop new or expand business enterprises? Uh, Mr. Henry?
Counsel, thank you for, uh, this is basically what we worked on a couple of weeks ago when, at the lake with the city council meeting. But what we're doing is with the current downtown project, we're doing a changeboard to do the lights. So what I provided for you was what the EDC has approved, and that is the light that will be, it's set in the sidewalk every 30 foot, as you walk down it. You know, that side of it will be the width of the lights, and it'll be at a 45 degree coming up out of the sidewalk towards the buildings, um, so that when you walk down that sidewalk. I think, the only thing we had to change was there's a ramp coming down in between Cardinal Hall's building and, um, the Murray Times building right there. So it was a front of the ramp, so we just took that one line off further back. So, yeah, those lights would be every 30 foot. And then the second page, third page of the handout, these would be the pedestals. So currently, like during peanut festival, you have the, the street light poles there. And on the street light poles, it has multiple wires coming out to plug in. This will put everything into a pedestal, and it'd be five graying pedestals along the curb of the sidewalk. So, and they'll be locked, and then we'll be open to the public. And so before, you had to go unlock every pedestal to get it up. Now, you just go turn it on, which at the end of the road, and they'll be there. So those are some of the things. And then, uh, the third one, which I don't have yet to bring to you, as we work together, as we're working with, with Velts, with a new lighting project, as the overhead will all be coming out, and everything will be run underground. So if you go downtown, do a little, have any more, uh, poles with the street lights on. So we'll be working with Ms. Turner and USC council to help pick out some decorative street lights to replace the current ones there. Um, that'll be another project that we'll be talking about here in the next, you know, two or three weeks.
May I, ma'am? May I, can I?
Yes.
Okay. So what I want to say is that when they first brought it to me to cover the sidewalk, sounds like local, sorry, that was maybe late. But it really took off with the lighting. I believe your total investment is somewhere around $70,000.
Yeah, actually, $70,000.
Actually, $70,000. But also in doing this, and you're giving me the two, uh, agreed, that Velts has agreed to remove the overhead wiring and put it underground, Martin, at this time, who else can do it? But I told Velts, thank you, thank you, because I don't want this space. They have agreed and made the commitment at this point that they will do all nine factors that we will go with. I said this could be over the next 10 years, and they have made the commitment to do underground, um, wiring for the entire, and to do decorative poles, street poles. Not just going to replace them with, like, a blue, like, a pole, like, we normally see with street poles. They're going to do a more decorative for our downtown area, and there are going to be LED lights. And they are paying for that, for the record. So...
Thank you for the infrastructure, to set them up.
To set them up. And then, and then told, that's really exciting, that it's not just for these debates, because it's not just for these match lights, but it's also for all the nine factors going for. Velts has made a commitment. And so I'm really, really excited. I think this lighting project, you know, kick it off for the other, and your downtown is really going to be an exceptional thing. I just can't wait till we can actually apply and, uh, you're going to have to remind me that all the little small towns, all this window, there will be...
You have little works, you have little, you know, that will...
But I think the light is coming up. This one's going to definitely be a reward winning. And, uh, Councilor Ortiz, it also started, people are going to need to actually apply for this. And so now we're going to have the lights, no more wiring, anything like that, to replace all the blue poles. They even agreed to, they'll tell me there, they even agreed to, there are some of those ducks, where they had, like, they were used to the poles, like, concrete ducks, like, is that? They even agreed to take those out. Have you seen those, it's like the concrete pedestal with nothing top of it? They even agreed to take those out so that we can have that downtown. Velts was excited, because they're just waiting for an opportunity, and that's going to have an opportunity. So we're going to let the board, when we apply them, to know that that's what we're going to plan. So we're going to plan for it. It kind of happened on me this time, but we're going to plan for it the next time. But I really think it's going to have a reward winning downtown.
And this is just for the current phase one, as we move forward. And, uh, like, we were invested in the, in the first phase, $50,000 the next phase, that would be part of the bidding process. So we won't run a 10-year roadblock like we did this time, and it'll be a soon selling, moving forward. But as far as downtown, we're really going to change the outlook, not just the sidewalks, but the aesthetic look for the buildings. So if you really want to get all our photo, the question time with the lights, you won't have anything blocking those buildings. Can we really ask?
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Um, you said Velts is doing the initial install?
No, they're, uh, what they're doing is they're paying for, um...
Not they're doing it themselves, but they're funding?
No, they're funding to install, they're going to install the three-inch copper wire. So that's probably the most expensive thing you can do. So what happened is when they came to, they said, oh, we want to replace the poles. Well, they had a future plan to replace them with the, the new stover pole, I think it was made out of. But then, as they came back and they worked, um, on the budget and offered to replace them all downtown, because we already turned the sidewalks, and they didn't want to, us to redo sidewalks and then come replace the wooden poles. They said, hey, we'll pay for the copper wire, but since we're already having the trench dug wrong, we worked with the current contractor, and they worked into labor, so we just had to pay for the, the condo. The first condo was like $2, which was barely anything.
My next question is, um, maintenance on these varial lights, like, if one of them goes out?
Yeah, so they're, they're set, they're set into a, um, a casing, so if they're to be replaced, I think there's eight screws. You unscrew them and replace the lights, and it's really cool. Uh, they're not the, the higher end side where you can change the color. Let's say you want to do something, you could do like a, like a film overlay, if you want a light downtown red. Or if it's the holidays and you wanted to put a, a green, you could put a green overlay. Or something with the police officers, you could do, and you could just cut them out, put more lights, like your downtown back color. A little manpower, but it'd be something that you could do as well. And they're going to be against that in the sidewalks, if they're on tripping hazard, and they're, um, if you read on there, they're, where you could drive, like, motorized, uh, wheelchairs over the top of them. Uh, so basically, like, you put an off car, and they would break. But as far as the maintenance home, that would be something, there's an easy project, so if something goes wrong, we'll, the city will maintain it.
There are going to be, any lights, going to have a light for sort of two to 10 years, uh, for the lights for that. And of course, because of the construction, it will come with basic one-year warranty.
And we didn't, we didn't, if we didn't pick the lights that, you know, if you see some of them, they have like, uh, the motion side of it, we should not get that.
Great, sure. Uh, Mr. Caldwell, we, how, how long, how long is it guaranteed? Do we have guarantee on that?
Yeah, so the craftsmanship for is a one-year warranty on it, and then the long, the sidewalks, the same. But as far as the electricity side of it, since Velts is installing it, they're going to help maintain the underground portion of it. So there won't be...
You mean the sidewalks are only one year? No, because they have to be more than the lights, of the lights.
Yeah, the lights, I mean...
The sidewalks. Light? Is that not the light?
No, it's the light.
I'm talking about the light, not the sidewalks, but the light, yeah.
Yes, that's my...
Oh, yeah, not the sidewalks, the light. Yeah, the sidewalks, you're, you're buying, it's a little different, but as far as the, the, the one year.
May I make a comment, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank Ben and his board, you know, started off with the sidewalks, you know, and they... and then it developed to this. And then we're going, hopefully, we'll, we'll be granted a phase two and continuation until, uh, phase nine or so or more. And we are going to be saving millions and millions of dollars to the tax giver. Plus, we're going to be bringing in more, uh, businesses. And it's, it's going to be pretty, hopefully, by, uh, hit a first of it. But thank you, Ben. You'll improve many of your, your work.
That's why the grant was so good. You were part of the, you did Mr. Turner, I'm sorry. Did you apply for those, your apply for the grant, sir?
The sidewalk one?
Yes, ma'am.
The city of Florisville apply for the grant. Let's say.
Thank you both. We're working together.
Okay.
Any other comments, or Mr. Ray or Mrs. Turner? I have not, I will enter a motion.
I want to approve the downtown sidewalk lighting and related improvement projects that previously determined by the FADC board of directors to be required of people in infrastructure necessary to promote or develop new or expand business enterprises.
I have a motion on, uh, this is key. Do I have a second?
I said it.
I have a second. Any citizens' comments?
There are none, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Uh, item passes by zero. Thank you. Moving on to.